I am nine, I think that's why everyone is here. Consideration of the resolution petitioning the governor of the state, I'd just like you to address the findings of the master matrix.
Hi, Mark. Is there already been a filing?
Basically, most of you folks weren't here when the county attorney was here. And the county attorney did discuss this briefly. And the county attorney made the statement that as a county attorney, he saw nothing wrong with this. As a private individual, he basically said he wouldn't sign it. And for a lot of reasons. And I had the same feeling on it, that quite a few of the where-asses, we could not justify, or at least I could not justify, that these are really facts and that.
There was a template that necessarily didn't address Mitchell County issues.
Basically, I really had no problem with the legislature taking a look at the master matrix, but that's as far as I would go with any documentation saying that maybe after how many years it's been in existence, that it's time for the legislature maybe to take a look at it, to see if it needs to be tweaked. I don't think that's anything wrong with it. It doesn't say that it needs to, it doesn't say it doesn't need to, it just says that let's just take another look at it.
How many counties are signing onto this so far?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, good. And then mostly from the North Iowa area, so far?
A lot, yeah. I have some, Floyd County, Almackee, Winnebago are the three that I got copies of from ISAC. And those are mostly talked about, you know, the more heavily countryside with the karst. And that was one of my concerns as well, the mole that we're going over it is that we haven't really stated a lot of concerns. You know, usually in the past until this year, we've always approved them with no negative comment. So we really can't say that we've told them these concerns because historically we haven't. And I know that we need to get more data. Iowa Select had given, was gonna give us some data, that they had other individual buildings that you wanted more time to prepare for, for next week?
Sorry, economic data?
Yeah, or just any anecdotal data. I know that Dean's talked about his testing on wells and information as far as that, that if we can find some hard data that shows that we have concerns, we really don't have any documented concerns at this time.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's not ringing a bell, but we absolutely can pull together some information for you.
And I know Farm Bureau wanted to come, but Kevin had comments. Are you guys here for Farm Bureau?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Did you have some concerns that you wanted to address that?
Well, first off, I didn't like the way that was worded, or the way that was stated in the agenda is that it was, it was to me leading in that statement. But second of all, I guess I'm a little insulted when you refer to Mitchell County as a karst topography. It certainly isn't the majority of the county. There are parts of it, but certainly in my region, there is none of that. So I think that, that needs to be kept in perspective. There are karst regions, but it is not, is not a majority of Mitchell County. Second of all, I'd just like to share a couple, three numbers. One is pork production in Iowa is something the 30 million had today. In 1960, we had a third quarter inventory of something of 15 million animals, going to feed for the lives something of six months. That tells me that our production in 1960 was not much different than today. Weights may have changed, efficiencies have changed. Second of all, if we look at corn production in the state of Iowa, Iowa, if ranked as a country, would be one-third, number three, the third largest corn producer in the world as a country. Pretty impressive. As a soybean producer, we battled with four and five with Illinois. Last year, we were number five. We produced an incredible amount of feedstuffs in Iowa. And it was only logical that we're gonna use those feedstuffs. Again, we're at a country level, we're not at just a state. I think we gotta keep those numbers in mind when we see the volume that is happening. It may seem overwhelmingly expanding, but in reality, it has changed. And with that change, economics have driven our use of byproducts to the point that it has value. And just about any livestock producer will tell you, the value, the potential for income, profit level, is in the waste. What better way to manage a resource than by making it the difference between red and black ink? Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Got my last one.
If I could make a comment regarding the karst terrain also. Master Matrix does not deal with karst terrain. That is geological, that is a completely separate issue that we have to go on what they call the DNR sighting atlas. There's maps there that show if there's potential karst, potential alluvial soils. If you are in those areas of potential, then you have to get a geological survey done. Or if you're in alluvial soils, you have to go to the, and get a declaratory order or determination depending on the size, aside from digging in our floodplains, which where you cannot build in a hundred-year floodplain of a major water source. So I think a little bit of that is being confused because if you open the master matrix, that isn't gonna have anything to do with karst or alluvial soils.
That's one thing you have to check though on your application for your plan, is if you have it and then you have to move forward, you don't get points for it.
It's part of the construction application, or it's part of the evaluation for any site, but it doesn't have anything to do with the master matrix. I guess in addition, you know, if we look at, if some will claim that the master matrix doesn't do its job, I would estimate that out of every five to six, maybe more sites that we evaluate, maybe one of those will need the matrix. So if we're looking at, you know, roughly 20% of potential sites, you know, are weeded out, those are the ones that you don't even, you never see because they've already been weeded out and all we talk about is the ones that, you know, do get enough points. So it's not a matter of if the matrix works, it's just that you don't see everything that doesn't need points. Those have already been taken out of the equation.
So you do have a lot more, like 80% of your site you don't approve for, because they don't need the matrix, is what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
What's an alluvial soil?
Alluvial soils are placed by water, so it's in a sandier soil, so it's, it's an indicator of potential of being in a floodplain.
Do I get the same?
Sure.
Okay. Here's what I would like, 'cause I mean, I'm glad you're considering it. You need to make it specific to Mitchell County. My suggestion was, take some time, research it, hear from producers, and hear from people in the community. Usually when people work together, we come up with a better, a better plan. My main concern is water quality. We now have 750 impaired waterways in Iowa. Now, I know a dam across the stream can cause it, it can be called impaired, and I've heard that, well, it's all those communities that don't have sewer treatment that's, but you know, those number of communities hasn't gone up and their population is not increasing, but the number of impaired waterways is increasing. We're not putting in more dams, they're not impaired because there's more dams. More waterways are being impaired because of the amount of, you know, waste or whatever. Other, other things are causing the water to be considered impaired. We already have over 9,000 capes in Iowa producing at least 22 billion gallons of manure. In 2016, there was a record number of beach closings, and I think Des Moines has the largest nitrate removal system in the country, I think. Things that I think that we as a community, all of us need to be looking at is a, well, a higher passage rate, so the score of 50% on a matrix isn't passing. Just a one-time enrollment for the county supervisor, so every year, they don't have to readopt the master matrix report. I think if you adopt it once, then you've adopted it until you rescind it, instead of every year having to remember to adopt it. There, I think there should be greater separation distances between, beyond the state's minimum requirements for things like schools, homes, public use areas and waterways. More site-specific items so that the master matrix takes into consideration the local topography and current water quality conditions in the area. I know one of the, I think it's the Slaughter Farm where that's in the manure management plan, it's not listed as a, as a, as a wetland or anything because it has to be specified by the DNR, but I've heard from multiple people that that, those fields like often flood every year. That, I mean, it's just potential for that manure to be getting right into the Cedar River.
That's how manure happens too.
Revisions to the point structure to incentivize, incentivize practices that prevent or mitigate pollution. Additional items for water and air quality monitoring should be added, and elimination of items that don't provide any environmental or community benefits. Now, this isn't specific. I think, you know, can, just regular Iowans that have to live around hog confinements and hog confinement producers, everyone needs to work together. Some producers, you know, they build their structures to a higher quality or higher, they put some things in that aren't required, and others don't. But if it still meets the matrix, they don't have to. But I, I think just the facts of more and more impaired waterways, we know that a lot of this manure is going on land that is tiled. We know that, I mean, I've seen it, when you have a full lagoon and you gotta get rid of it, and yeah, we don't wanna apply manure and then have it rain for three days, but sometimes that happens. I've seen it happen, 'cause sometimes we have really, really, really wet falls and it's hard to get out there, and you gotta get the lagoon emptied before winter, and it happens. So, I mean, to say that this has nothing to do with, of the impaired waterways, the amount of manure that's being put on the soil in Iowa has nothing to do with impaired waterways, I think is not true. But I think we all, we all, neither side needs to be screaming at each other. You know, I think we all want clean water. And as I keep, you know, using the example of the agricultural drainage wells, we have had practices in the past that farmers have done, and it seemed like a great idea to put more land into production. And that was a good thing. They could grow more corn until we found out we were polluting our drinking water. So just because we have a practice and everyone says it's a good idea, sometimes you need to relook at that idea if you start noticing things like surface water contamination or groundwater contamination, and you need to start looking at your practices. So I think it's good that you're, we're having the discussion. I know there's some members of the Soil Water Commission that are at a state meeting today. Be good to hear from them. It would be good to take your time before you do any resolution and really understand all sides of the issue and adopt a resolution that's best, best reflects the concerns of the citizens of Mitchell County. So, I mean, I think we all, things always work better if we work together and not have, you know, well, we're gonna write this for the pork producers, or we're gonna write this just for the citizens, and, you know, neither one of those ideas would serve the public.
Can I make a comment, please?
No, sir.
I kind of feel like I'm sitting with a different perspective. I'm a farmer, third generation, and a mom. I'm a young person that moved back three years ago, four years ago, and I moved back for the quality of life for my family. I lived in Des Moines and Indianapolis prior, spent about 15 years there, just before deciding moving back to Mitchell County. And I did that because my oldest was in kindergarten, and I wanted a different quality of life for my family. I am an agriculturalist, true and true. You guys, a lot of you know my history in FFA and in ag, and I love ag. But it's interesting. You know, my husband and I even looked at putting up a confinement agriculture as a way for us as a young farmer to be able to farm. We also have off-farm income. So I feel like I'm kind of sitting in the middle of a lot of different things and very conflicted. But now I'm looking at having a 5,000-head confinement built 1,900 feet away from where I sleep. And that's, in addition, that would make eight buildings within about a mile of my home. And that changes the quality of life perspective a little bit. I went for a walk with my family the last three nights down our gravel road, and you know what? I'm used to smelling a little smell every, sometimes, we've been tracking it three to five, sometimes six times a week. We smell something from three-quarters of a mile away. It lasts for maybe an hour as the air is exchanging. You know what? I live in a rural spot. I get it, that's fine, we've gotten used to it. But I'm not sure 5,000-head, 1,900 feet away from my house and my farm says maybe the best idea. And so I would encourage you to look at that master matrix. I am for confinement agriculture. My family's for confinement agriculture, we're for agriculture. We personally don't raise livestock at the moment. But I think maybe we need to look at that master matrix to say, are there some tweaks that need to happen to that? And our separation distances maybe need to improve a little bit. You know, where we were looking at placing a facility, another farmer is actually gonna place one there before we've gotten one. So, and we had a mile-long stretch to be able to do that and have some separation distances away from neighbors. And I think that's part of being a good agriculturalist. So I hope that you consider this and to look at it for, you know, for me and for economic development, I'm a young family that moved back to the county. And that's what we want to attract in our county as well, and continue to have young families come. So I hope you consider those thoughts as well. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else?
Yeah, if I could, I've, I've been involved with this issue since 1995, so both legislatively and rules, including the master matrix. So I was in the room when the master matrix was being discussed, and I think it's important to remember that that was a compromise that was made back at that time, and that there were three things kind of really driving. One was the legislature decided they didn't really like open-air lagoons. Okay? It's okay for municipalities, you know, certain sizes, but the legislature did not like those. So the matrix essentially drove the end of anaerobic lagoons used for swine production on. There hasn't been a new one built since, I think 1998 was probably the last one that went in. So it did that. The second thing that it did is they wanted to drive it to under 2,500-head units. The theory being, the smaller units aren't gonna be maybe as big a problem, but if you're gonna go above 2,500-head, you have to go beyond state laws, state rules and state regulations. Now, you could argue that you can make it tougher or tweak it, but I think, I think the matrix has served its intended purpose pretty well since it was adopted. And, you know, I hear, you know, it's easy to say, well, let the legislature look at it again. They're aware of this issue. You know, Representative Helen Miller from Ford Dodge is well aware of this issue, there are a number of legislators that are. And if they wanna reopen and look at it, you know, I think they're gonna decide to do that. I would encourage, I, I, one of my former colleagues at my law firm is Kristi Harshbarger, who's the general counsel for the Iowa State Association of Counties. And Kristi's really up on this stuff, and I would encourage you and other counties, if you wanna work, you know, don't get pushed by a special interest group that has its own agenda. If you really think the citizens of Mitchell County want this to be looked at, it's not coming from them. I would encourage you to work through and with ISAC, in terms of anything legislatively that you might propose. But appreciate you taking my comments.
Good. You put that on your monkey survey and see how many people in Mitchell County want this looked at.
Can I make a comment, please? My name is Aaron Perry. I manage a hog farm for Iowa Select Farms in Mitchell County. My fiancee, Mary, manages farm. Regard Casey manages farm in Howard County. In fact, most of my family and friends are tied to Iowa Select in some ways. Mary and I are also longtime residents of Riceville. Today, I represent the 40 employers who work in this county. We are proud of our business and thankful, thankful that in this little town, we have opportunities for full-time jobs with family benefits. I am asking that you please consider the hundreds of families in the county who rely on pork industry. The matrix is a good tool for all pork producers to use, and it works. I ask of you to withdraw this resolution temporarily.
Dean?
We've worked with Mike and Keith here with Iowa Select Farms for 125 years, and we grow vegetables for Seneca Foods, we grow several hundred acres of everything. And our manure management plan that's written by these guys is so strict and so tough that we are only allowed to apply what's taken back out. But our uptake is, is all that we're allowed to apply. We can't have no runoff, we can't have any of that kind of stuff. Our, our disease quarantine and everything through the human consumption stuff is, it's very strict. That, that's why the runoff and water pollution and that stuff, there's, there's gotta be a better way than listening to hearsay of how it's tested and that, 'cause we test our wells on a yearly basis. We have monitoring wells beside our sites. And our water is the cleanest now, but it's been 20 years. So it, everybody's making headway. The master matrix works, it, it does its thing. And we're gonna continue to grow too. I mean, we're second and third generation now, so, and the kids wanna keep going, so we're gonna continue to grow too. It's just a matter of time, making everything happen, putting it all together, how your stuff is applied, how it's done, our rotational crop, we graze, we have corn, soybeans, sweet corn, peas, alfalfa, oats. It's all taken up, it's used, it's a valuable commodity. It, it's like Carl just said, it's the difference between red and black ink at the end of the day. And that is, it's, it's very, very important to all these farms that they keep producing the way they're producing, the way things are going right now.
Are all the capes required to do well monitoring?
That's volun, we do it voluntarily, because we wanna...
Are they required to do it?
No.
You know, ours is all voluntarily because we wanna keep track of that stuff ourself.
I applaud you.
When we have a semi-load of food going up to the plant of produced peas, or sweet corn, or edible beans, we want that documentation to go with that load, so everybody knows what's what.
Anybody else?
My name's Nick Dillon. I've worked with, you know, hundreds of individuals in the state that have wanted to put up sites. A lot of them are young men and women who wanna come back to the towns, towns like Osage, you know, places all around here that are rural communities that don't have a lot of good IP and jobs to bring them back. And I would say, out of every five, six people that you bring in that want to put one up, I have to turn three or four of them away. I really do. Because they cannot find the ground to be able to do it in the right way. And it makes me emotional when I have to turn young people away because they can't come home and work with their family. And I know it affects more than just that young person, it affects the families, their dads, their grandpas, their grandmas, everyone there because they wanna keep this going. And the, we're getting handcuffed, and it's getting harder and harder to do. And we're doing it the right way, and we're trying to make sure that we are eliminating any chance of pollution. And that goes to application, that goes to what we do in our road drops, that goes to what we do, the way we build our barns. These aren't just the old barns of like, you know, the early 90s, there were some problems with those barns, there was. These are engineered buildings that are built specifically to hold that manure in and to keep the animals inside of it safe, and to grow them healthy with clean water in there. And I hope you just remember that it's our livelihood that those limits. Thank you.
See, I've got, I think, for you two, it's called, We Belong to Ag Spectrum, which is what it's called. It looks at all the spectrums of everything that goes with our food production. And it's got a lot of the stuff in here, like, just from here, it says the manganese in 1961 was 27 parts per million, and it's down to seven now. That's a much better job, and I'll, I'll leave you guys a copy of this stuff too. I'll call it biggies.
With the master matrix, and you're talking about the karst soil, like, not all Mitchell County is karst soil. If you start playing with the master matrix and you constrain it too much, what I do here on my farm might be completely different than what Dean has to do over there to apply his inertia and keep any runoffs and, you know, we gotta get away from one side that's all for the whole state. And what they did 40 years ago, we're changing all the time. In five years, we might be changing the way we do things again too. But we are becoming more efficient, and like Carl pointed out, how good our, how we are for our corn production, if we were a nation, it's just phenomenal. The eyes of the world are on us, they're envious of how we do things because we are so efficient.
So you're always changing. What drives your change?
Economics, be a better environmental stewardess. I've lived here all my life, maybe my kids will come back here and live here. I, I wanna reassess, you know, what we want, and we better than what you found it.
I agree with you. Go ahead.
I had the opportunity last, last month to take two researchers from Europe to three different farms in Brandy County and Black Hawk County. And they were specifically comparing pork production in the countries of Ukraine, Netherlands, France, Poland, and the United States. They studied the master matrix process, studied the reports that are filed with our government. And they were so impressed with what our farmers do to protect this soil. So I, I think as globally, we're leaders with those instruments that we're currently using to protect our environment. Thank you.
Any other comments? I guess we'll...
Well, I just want you to know, I mean, I'll post this discussion, all of it, I won't edit it, 'cause I think we need to have an honest discussion and hear from everybody. And everybody needs to consider all sides, 'cause I, you know, I might wanna call for a moratorium, but I know that's, you know, that might be my personal opinion, but I, you know, I think we don't need to start there, we need to start with a discussion like this and hear from, and hear from more people.
I got a question. How are Iowa Select buildings, I assume you folks have a set of specs that these buildings have to meet, how are they different than the ones in Minnesota? 'Cause you drive up to Minnesota, you don't see near as many capes.
There are step-back restrictions.
If Iowa different from them, or are they different from us, or...
There are step-backs, restrictions.
And county controlled.
Standards change from state to state, and like Shannon said, they have county and even down to township regulations in Minnesota, which makes it very difficult depending on where you're at. I can't give you specific, you know, as far as building requirements, because I don't, I don't work in Minnesota, but...
We're all pretty close to Minnesota.
They have different guidelines also. We want, we want known, 'cause we never went through that process unless you built one.
I just happen to notice if you're going north of Adams, and you take those two little curries and keep going, there's a pretty, fairly new, I mean, it's, I think it's been there 15 years, but they've got three confinements right there in their farmyard. And you drive by there and you're rarely, you ever smell anything. I mean, but if you ever get that way, just take a note of that. I mean, that's, but they do have capes, but they don't seem...
One thing about Minnesota is, so you're familiar with the 2,400-head sites where it gets right up to the animal limit. Minnesota, it's 3,000-head, where you get right up to that limit before you have to do more extensive permitting. So like, they can be larger even, you know, than we have here. And as far as the building, the structure itself, the lagoon is inspected with an engineer and they sign off on it. But as the structure itself, it's nothing different from what we would build in Iowa, Minnesota, South Dakota, Illinois, Missouri, anywhere.
It's always very united with our neighbors too, so...
You might wanna check with some of your supervisor neighbors in Minnesota and ask them.
I've always said, this board and the master matrix, we do nothing but say, send it on. And once we do that, they make the decision. If we do nothing, they don't even look at it.
But now we have changed, and we did have our first meeting on the last one, on July 3rd, with the individuals within the three-mile radius that were notified, and interested individuals, and the producer, and I think it was a great meeting. We had like a dozen people, we talked about odor control, traffic control, air control, quality, and we had a great discussion, I thought. I think a lot of things came out that in the past weren't discussed, it was just all of a sudden, the excavators pulled in and all of a sudden you found out you're gonna have this down road.
It was just all of a sudden, the excavators pulled in and all of a sudden you found out you're going to have this down the road. We're trying to get it more of a discussion and a dialogue. And we all, we're in this together. You guys aren't trying. When we put a producer in, I was asked in my four against hog confinement, and I'm neither. I want us all to work together because we're, we're producers. We need to eat. The world needs to eat. We are like a nation in production for corn, soybeans and pork. And we just need to talk with our neighbors and be good neighbors. That's Mitchell County's policy. Be a good neighbor, talk to everyone. So I think we're doing a good job with that. I know with, I had proposed to table the resolution for now for more thought on it. I think we've had a lot of good discussion, but I agree with County Attorney Walker. If we did something like this, it would be up to 15 years. We think it needs to be reviewed, but as far as specifications of concerns, we really haven't had a whole lot of them.
And it needs to be specific for Mitchell County.
Right. Yeah, we don't have a lot of the car soil. We don't have concerns about distances. Because what are the distances? Where's the, where's the background on the distances? If we increase it by 500 feet, is that going to make a difference versus what it is now in Iowa? Is it just going to make it harder to, we don't have 10% of the sites approved in Iowa? I can't answer all those questions.
And I, I think there needs to be more research done on impacts of the manure and water quality. And the fact that a lot of fields where it goes are tiled. I mean, I don't know. It's speculation. That's one of the things that I think needs more investigation. Is none of it getting to the tile line? Is some of it, if some, you know, I don't know the answer. I speculate when I see it being applied and it rains for three days, it's probably a fair amount of it, you know, running right off. But I don't think anybody's checking the end of the tile lines to find out or, you know.
We did just have a DNR complaint about one of, I don't know. They were actually putting tile line in at the time they applied the manure and the investigations showed no contamination.
Well, see, and that's, that's the kind of thing that needs to happen to alleviate concerns. Then we need to figure out why are more waters getting contaminated? What's the source of the pollution for the waterways? Because that's what needs to be addressed. We all need clean water to live.
And we do fund water testing in the county. We're one of the few counties that actually.
Do you test for nitrates? The nitrates and?
Adam, you want to say something?
Well, yeah, I think, I think a lot of this is just common sense. I think the master matrix and the hog stuff gets a lot of attention because it smells, because it's out there. So you guys are going to face that no matter what, you know? That's not to say that they're doing something wrong necessarily. They're doing what's right for their families. They're trying to make the bottom line work. Like they said, it's the difference between red and black. I think ecologically speaking, we're ending up with the water quality problems. Yeah, there's a lot of production. There's a lot of manure production. But rather than, you know, force that cost back on them and, and try to address the matrix, I think you can, you can certainly do some things to help with neighbors and things like that. But the water quality issue itself is going to be driven by nutrients on the landscape and not necessarily during production season. You're seeing the biggest runoffs and problems in the fall and winter where there's nothing there to use that manure, right? So like she mentioned, you gotta spread it sometime, right? And there may be snow on the ground. When that snow melts, things are going to move with it. That's just common sense. That's the way it is. So I think that pushing the legislature on this issue might be one thing you can do. But I think a better solution that everyone can, can get behind would be to push the legislature to, to absorb some of that cost with practices that help during those times of years, like native vegetation, buffer strips, things like that. And make those incentives compensate producers so that everybody wins. I mean, our tax dollars should go to produce the common, to protect our common resources. As you guys kind of maybe saw in the article I wrote the other day. Everybody suffers from whatever goes into our air, whatever goes into our water. I think everyone should take a part in, in protecting that. So I think those issues are, are what's going to help us more is funding those conservation practices a little bit more, making them more attractive so that producers are inclined to, to go that route rather than get, get, you know, better returns if they don't do that. So it's just a matter of like, like everyone's kind of saying, is working together to make it, make it work for everybody, so.
I'd like to address your, your concern and the questions about Minnesota, and I think it's pretty simple. It's cultural. First off, we grow a lot more corn than Minnesota as a state. Now, why is, why is Mitchell County different than there? Culturally, Minnesota counties have a lot more dairy than we do, smaller operations. And those things are cultural. For most of those sites that we're seeing as new sites don't have livestock now. In my neighborhood, the, the first Iowa Select building is being built. Hasn't been any for 30 years. Why is that, Shannon? Because it's already full, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's cultural. Why did Wright County get the big influx of chickens and, and swine in the 90s? Because there was none. Those kids all went to college and didn't come back home. So it's cultural and, and I think others can be respectful of it. It's a very proud culture in rural Mitchell County and it's our number one industry. Cultural differences.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's the consensus of this board that we're not going to be acting on this today or whatever. And so we've had a lot of input.